According to that clock, if it's not on clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. You would join me on the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
Mr. Neale?
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today. Lord, we thank you for pushing back the water so that we can get through. And, Lord, we would ask that you would have your hand on these commissioners to do what's pleasing in your side, as well as what's great for Noahuata County. These things I ask in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Item four, read and approve of minutes. Item five, unfinished business. We have none. Item six, new business. Six A, discussion and take action on notice of intent, NOI hazard mitigation grant program, presented by Lori Summer. Lori?
Right, so the notice of intent is our notice to the state that says that we are going to be applying grant funding to proceed with our hazard mitigation plan and the planning process. The application needs to request an amount. And I have also clarified, since we brought it up here a couple of weeks ago, that we do not need to check the box there regarding floodplain because this is a planning process. We're not taking any action. We're not building anything or doing anything with the money out in the county. We are actually funding the planning process. So we have to decide an amount that we feel is appropriate, that will fund, basically, my program as I'm writing that, the plan for us. There is actually, our first meeting, I have tentatively scheduled for June 26th, so I am proceeding with the process. So the sooner we get in our notice of intent, we get in line for the grant funding when it becomes available. And it is, since we do have a presidential declaration for the state, but it only covers three counties so far, but we do have the declaration, funding will be available for this planning process. That disaster declaration opens up funding sooner than the annual that would have been available starting July 1st. So the sooner we get that in, the sooner we'll get consideration for that request, so.
I know it's kind of unclear right at this point as far as the dollar value. Do you have any kind of explanation so far?
Because I am going to be in abbreviated process. You guys have an end date. A lot of times when contractors write these plans, they just say, "Well, we're going to take about 18 to 24 months-ish." We're not. We're going to have this plan completed by the end of November. So this basically is funding for me and the planning process from now until the end of the year 2019, or however long you think it would take. After the plan is done, we'll have to send it in for approval. So what I basically am asking for is funding through 2019. So it doesn't have to be a large amount, but that would fund things like if I want to provide food or beverages for my meetings or, you know, whatever. So, not that that's necessary, I'm just saying that that's what that grant would be for. I think the total dollar amount available for each of the planning grants is, the cap is $50,000, but I wouldn't expect us to request that much. I would think $20,000 would probably cover six months of planning. It was mine. It's on me.
Was that you, Max?
Well, it's not me.
Thoughts, gentlemen? Dollar amounts?
Once again, this is our notice of intent. This is not the actual application. The notice of intent gets us in line and then gets us in the system, the computer system, and we will do things online from here on out. Even if we request $20,000, they may not approve that much. So that's a top dollar, that's why I'm suggesting $20,000, because they'll determine what Noahuata County would qualify for, basically, in their...
And that's to do the plan?
That's to do the plan. Like I said, Washington County is paying their contractor $80,000. So I am a deal. We don't have to pay this back. This is a grant.
So this is a grant, 100% grant?
This is a grant.
We don't match it?
We will, but in the planning process itself, it's not like other grants. In the planning process, we use in-kind dollars to match that. The people that show up and help us do the planning process, which is why I'm doing these meetings, because each time I go out and talk to a group of people, and I've been out to New Alaway, South Coffeyville, Juan, I've been to Delaware, haven't been to Runepaw yet, but each time I go to the meeting and tell them about this process that we're starting, and each time I hold a meeting from here on out, the people that show up, we get in-kind dollars for that volunteer time of our citizens.
And that goes towards the grant?
And, once again, who shoulders the grant? I'm sorry?
It goes as dollar value towards the grant.
That's in-kind volunteer time. They set a dollar amount for people's time. So if there were 20 people that gave an hour each, and they say that's $10 for each person, that's $200 that we put in of our time and volunteer, yeah, volunteer time toward that, which is also beneficial when we request a lower amount. But if there is any lack of that, then there's a smaller amount to come up with for our part. But in the planning process in particular, in-kind dollars are considered. So some of the other grant projects, obviously, in-kind dollars can't be used for projects, for roads and things like that, but for the planning process, definitely that, the in-kind counts. So, once again, this is not our application. This is our notice of intent. And then our actual formal application will come back through the commissioners and things so that we actually approve that. This is just to get them on notice that we are going to apply for planning funds, so.
But you have to have a plan in there?
To start, yes. I mean, we could ask for $50,000 and let them go down, but I don't think $50,000 is realistic for what we need. I think $20,000 should be more than enough to cover it, so.
I'd make a motion to follow the recommendation of the board of county commissioners for approved the notice of intent for $20,000. Yes? Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Item B, discussion and take action on Assessor's Office Annual Services Agreement, Oklahoma State University. Been through Ashley Kane. Dave, any?
This is what we have to pay Oklahoma State for them to provide the programs that we're using. And we've had to do that for about three or four years now. It used to be free, but they decided with their funding cutback from the federal government that all counties were going to have to dip in and pay. We're one of the lower-paying counties there is. Some of them get hit pretty hard.
Looks like $2,000?
$2,000, yes, sir.
It states here that it's $2,000 which you can pay on the house, where you just go ahead and just take care of it.
We usually just pay it upfront, so it's done.
I'll make a motion to accept the terms. Agreed? Yes? Yes? Yes. Thanks, gentlemen. Good day. Thank you. Six to... Oh, I'm sorry. Item C, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-79, acceptance of donation for the sheriff's office. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners accept the following donation from Philip Rainwater on behalf of the county to be used in the sheriff's office. Paper clips, pens, pencils, binder clips, cereal bowls, three large mixing bowls, kitchen storage containers, rulers, all-purpose labels, staples, stapler, and six three-ring binders. Motion to approve. Yes? 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 Item D, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-80, acceptance of donation for the Noahuata courthouse. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners accept the following donation from Commissioner Troy Frittel, paper copies and digital copies of the blueprints of the Noahuata County courthouse. Motion to accept. Yes? Did we not already have?
We did, we didn't have any copies.
Oh.
And I had to submit a copy.
Just there?
And we don't even count there. I wouldn't waste another day, so it's paper.
Yes?
Yes.
You didn't have to send a copy of the document?
But we have to submit a copy. That was just the easiest way to do it. And it turns out that not all the copies are going to be in the 1911s. That's the 85 copies. They're not all there.
But it's not to get the file? But it's enough to get the file?
No. But we'd have to have them too, because it's part of the building. So, still looking. Beginning to wonder if they exist, if they ever existed. The 1911 copies.
Item B, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-81, acceptance of donation for the sheriff's office. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners accept a donation from Dolores Kane for the amount of $100 on behalf of the county for the express purpose of sheriff's office needs. Motion to approve. Yes?
Yes.
Item F, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-82, Declaration of Surplus. From the sheriff's office. 2008 Ford van. 2002 Ford Crown Victoria. 2008 Ford Crown Victoria. 2009 Ford Crown Victoria. 2007 Chevrolet Impala. And a 2007 Chevrolet Impala. Yes? Yes? Item G, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-83, Declaration of Surplus. Also sheriff's office. 2010 Ford Crown Victoria. 2008 Dodge Charger. Motion? Yes? Yes? Yes. $100,000 be transferred into each of the three districts' account T-7-1, T-7-2, and T-7-3 to set out, as set out in the transfer form attached, for the total of $300,000, transferred for the following reason. Due to the floods, or, you know, due to the storms and flooding water, the roads are in need of repair. And the CBR 105 account has $897,101.77. And this is, either way I understood it, to get started working on the project repair and stuff with anticipation that sometime people will come in and reimburse, reimburse. I don't know how hard it, the other two districts were. I know you have a lot of damage. I don't know how much you've got, but I've got seven sites, so it's probably going to be around $20,000 to $25,000. Some of them might be a little bit more, some less, but I can just tell you right now, $100,000 is not going to cover all my sites, but get you started, yes. I know I don't have in my budget to take care of these projects, let alone trying to put rock back on the road. No, right. So I'll make a motion. Yes? Yes? Item I, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-85, Policies Concerning Rideaway Permits.
What this is concerning is we're working on the charter accounts and the T highway accounts, which, once we get kind of done and get to where we need to start accumulating the monies, the commissioners have several accounts that are operating in like MNOs that are called something else. Well, there's funds in the rideaway accounts right now that were put in as deposits that have been the same funds each year. And what they need to be is that we need a policy change that rideaways are non-refundable. It's basically the cost of doing business with the county. And then from this point on, it'll be deposited into your MNO. Because at the end of this, what's going to happen is your T-RWD account is being consolidated with your MNO. So this is one of those steps that we need to kind of get taken care of. We worked on it Thursday with Sherry Shafer. And you guys have about three accounts that are probably going to be consolidated into two MNOs. And this is one of them. And in order for me to be able to start the process, I need to change the policy.
The charter accounts is cleaning up a load of accounts.
Exactly.
I've talked to multiple counties, and they can't believe we've got so many accounts.
I agree. This is going to be a lot easier to deal with. They're very specific in their nature when they were created, and at the same time, they're not necessary. They were then, maybe, but they're not necessary now. And so part of that is we need to be able to get those funds transferred to your T2 accounts, which is your MNO, so that way when we transfer for the new year, we're not pulling from a whole bunch of different places. We're just going one over to the new year.
And that now?
It'd be easier if we just go now and get it done with before the new account actually gets placed. Slumber?
Yes? 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 Item J, discussion and take action on Resolution 19-86, Extension of Title 19, Section 6A, Section 180.51, passed March 25th, 2019, in Board of County Commissioners meeting. He says, whereas pursuant to Title 19, Section 6A, Section 180-51, allows an extension to be passed, allowing an additional final 60 days, allowing the Board of County Commissioners, in the time of need, to transfer staff in any office to help to the extent that that said office may function properly. And be it therefore resolved, Title 19, Section 6A, Section 180.51, also prohibits any employee from being transferred for more than 120 days. By adopting this extension, it will end later than July 25th of 2019.
So this is where I had the guys in the jail doing the repairs?
Yes.
And we haven't got to spend much time there lately. And probably for the next two weeks, we won't be back in there. But this will extend it long enough that we can finish the projects we start. But as of right now, we're snowed out on the roads, and they're a little bit unsafe to be driving right now. So, got to go there. Motion to pass?
Yes? Yes? Item K, discussion, take action on agreement between District 2, Cord Wilson, and the Wilson Ranch. This is an agreement between Cord Wilson and the ranch and us for share. $10 slated.
Is this open to the two districts as well?
I think, I mean, this one is just for us. But I think if you want to talk to anybody, you'd have to... Jared made a comment with it there. It might save us some lives. Yeah.
Where are they located?
407. Yeah, more rancher. Yes? 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 Item M, discussion and take action on Julie Lamb, Resource Conservationist, and Cord Coel, District Conservationist with the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service, to discuss the Emergency Watershed Program. Sir, I thought you'd never get to it.
She's got some handouts there. I just want to go over real quick just one of the programs that we do offer to you guys. It is called our Emergency Watershed Protection Program. We have done it in the past in the county in probably about 2008, when Dean Bridges was, one of the commissioners would work with him. Basically, what this program does is it does provide federal funding for the opportunity, maybe, to help with some infrastructure, road repairs. Also, maybe to remove when you get bridges with log jams, that kind of stuff. But the main goal is we're trying to look at infrastructure program, or infrastructure projects. Now, with that being said, this is a federally funded program, so we would cover 75% of the costs. And then the 25% of the cost would be to the commissioners or to the county for in-kind services or cash. In the past, we've always done in-kind services where we used your equipment, your labor, that kind of stuff. With that being said, in this packet, you will notice that there is a letter in there, a sample letter in there. There has to be a letter from the commissioner in 60 days of the storm event, which that's going to back it up to May 20th. So once we have a letter from you guys with an intent that you would be willing to be, want to be a part of this program, we need that letter. And then we will, you guys need to get with us, with Cord and I, so that we can start looking at areas that you might have some damage. I know you said you had seven areas, but we need to go look at those. I can't promise we can do all of them, because it does have to meet certain criteria. That being that it is a very, you know, traveled road, postal service can't get... That being that it is a very, you know, traveled road, postal service can't get through, school bus crosses, it's something of that nature, where we have to be identifying the true meaning of the infrastructure and including the, yeah.
The annual tax resell next Monday, 9:00 a.m. in the treasurer's office. A lot of bargains up there. See me.
Any of them underwater? I'm kidding.
First line's going to start coming through.
David?
Want to let everybody know that field crew will be out probably the rest of the summer in the northeast part of the county, taking photos. And we don't want to have what happened in one of the other counties where one of their field people was threatened with a firearm, so we want to let them know they're coming.
Carol? Lori, you still?
Yes, yes, I do. So, Red Cross has provided some cleanup kits, shovels, rakes, gloves, bug spray. Trying to think what else. But I'll be, I posted on our Facebook that I'll go ahead and go out to the fair building between 2:00 and 5:00 today. And what I'm asking for, when people do pick up supplies, is give me the address or promise that they'll go on the website to report their damage. We are, it's almost a guarantee that we're going to get our public assistance declaration, because the president did sign Governor Stitt's request for a disaster declaration. It's so far, they've only made it good for Tulsa, Muskogee, and Wagner counties, because that damage is documented. FEMA has not been here yet. They were going to come for April 30th storm, when this second round of storms started, so they haven't been here yet, and we haven't documented that. But we will, most, I can't say, you know, but it's pretty much certain that we will get the damage assessed, or the damage disaster declaration for our public assistance. That is different than individual assistance. In order to get individual assistance for our county, we have to document the damages. So there is a website that you can go to, anybody who has losses. They can go to www.damage.ok.gov. We are asking for people to self-report this information, because then that collects all the data, all the damage points of our county, and we can go through logically and check everybody all at the same time. This includes residential, business, and agriculture losses. So if you've lost head of cattle, or you know somebody who did, please go on there. This is monetary losses. And we have to provide, for FEMA, the actual losses to our county in order to get that declaration for individual assistance. In the past, it's been very difficult to document that. And so we're asking as many people as possible to go on there. We can't do anything about it unless we know about losses. So that is, that is really important at this point, so. And as a side note, being new to the emergency management in No Wada County, a lot of people don't realize that these resources exist, but that, what the process is that we have to do it. And it really comes down to, if I don't know, or if the state doesn't know that there is a, is damage, or there is a need for assistance, we can't help. And I'm certainly trying my best to bring in resources for the things that we need as a county, so. We'll get there. We'll get there.
And one more time, Lori, the website is? Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that you don't get patted on enough in No Wada County when you have something like this, compared to, we went through a turmoil the last six months. And on my side of the lake, I've been out from people. I went to Katrina. I spent half of my life in the military, and I know what flooding's like. I was down there on the ground. And I just want to pat on the back, first of all, the commissioners, calling people, letting us know. Dave Neely's office, I had a little problem last week when, you know, we drove through water. And especially the sheriff, because I talked to the commissioner and the sheriff, and I had a real problem, and I don't know yet how they got through the water, but they got out there and they took care of my problem. It's good to see that we can, when we need to get together, we get together. So I want to say, everyone in this room that's worked in No Wada County, thank you. I wear three hats. You know, I'm on Fire Department City and 911 with this guy back here, and we're working too. But I'm proud to say we're finally pulling together. Keep up the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Sheriff?
I just wanted to share with you that yesterday, we lost a lifetime resident from this county, Eddie Lee Lawrence, if you can keep his family in prayer. Kind of helping the situation on Route 17. It's a disaster now, but, you know, it had to be traveled a lot, but they responded quickly.
Jerome?
We have a meeting, 911 meeting on Thursday. 2:00.
2:00. 2:00?
2:00.
Sorry, your minister, Fitzroy. Mr. Rickman?
I'm the Methodist pastor, and the Methodists have a lot of resources. I should have been here last week telling you all about them, but we put together a number of flood buckets for anyone who needs to muck out their houses whenever this is over, and we're very happy to share that. I should have let you know about that, I'm sorry. We also have a Confederacy of groups called Volunteers and Mission, that if we have any larger projects that need to happen that we don't have money for, then let me know about that, and I'd be happy to mobilize some of our people around that if I can. So I want to be helpful. Like I said, I'm sorry I wasn't here last week to offer that help. Completely unrelated, Pentecost is on Sunday, and that's when we celebrate the gift of the Holy Spirit being sent. And my churches are worshiping over at Jack Gordon Park, I think that's the name of it.
Yes.
Is that one of our parks? Yeah. We're going to be over there at 11:00 on Sunday, and there's going to be burgers and hot dogs, and so anyone's welcome to come worship with us if you want. That's it.
Everyone, thank you. Stacy?
Nope.
Want to say thanks to the guys from 19 that was getting supplies in and out, don't know who they were. Every time I went down there, there was two or three boats lined up, just, you know, nothing, not even rescued, just taking people what they need and being real helpful.
That's good. I'm going to respect what Rocky said.
Yeah. I seen people out with kayaks delivering milk and bread in your district.
Yeah, that's what they were.
We just called out to help them. I mean, it, this last three weeks is, I'm telling you, everybody ought to grin from ear to ear, because we come together. But I seen grown men in kayaks with milk and bread on the front delivering. Kayaks of all. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's just kind of, just like you said, as far as working all together stuff, but my district, I had two gentlemen, I want to make a special thank you to Jim Barker for helping us out this past week, and then, I'll tell you what, we had a gentleman out here on Route 27 that had his own personal grader out there helping himself. Bill Davis done an excellent job out there, and I want to say a special thank you to both them gentlemen, along with everybody else that's helped out in all these situations. But, and then also, I want to offer to the other two commissioners, tomorrow at 1:30, we had this special sheriff's committee meeting, and we have a gentleman coming here from Memphis to talk to us about jail and things like that, so remedies. I would like to invite both of you there. That's tomorrow around. Yes, 1:30. I agree with Rocky. I think the county is coming together, and what we seem to when there's a disaster, but we want to keep it going from here on out, so, not just our bad times, so, thank you to everyone.
Item 14, blanket purchase orders.